Computer time, that's correct.
All right, I showed the clock has turned to seven. Welcome, everybody. Call this February 20th, 2024, meeting to order. We'll start with the pledge. Please stand if you can.
Pledge of allegiance. Finish your three.
Thank you, everybody. Ms. Lee, the role, please.
Councilmember Farrar.
Present.
Councilmember DeRozier. Councilmember Cortez. Mayor McCoy.
Here.
Councilmember Bowman. Yes. Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Overholzer.
Here.
And the clerk is present and I believe Councilmember Bowman is now present. That concludes the roll.
He's gonna show up as Aaron Erdman, I think.
Is he in the meeting room?
Councilmember Bowman is not yet present.
Okay. He'll figure it out, I'm sure, if he's not here. Uh, next up, uh, does any council members anything to add or subtract to the agenda? Uh, could we get a amend the emotion to add a 10 minute exec session, please, to the end of the meeting?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add a 10 minute executive session uh, pursuant to RCW42 dot three zero dot one one zero uh, for the purposes of reviewing their performance of an employee to take place after council communication with no action to follow.
Thank you. Councilmember DeRozier for the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you for that. Uh, moving on to summary reports and presentations. Uh, now this time when city council report on any committees they sat in on behalf of the city. Uh, I believe, uh, Councilmember Farrar, you have one for RTC?
Yes, but I don't have anything to share other than we, um, we decided to go and move forward with the plan for the regional transportation plan. Yeah.
All right.
And so I had a lot of good things on there for battleground that will help us. So I was excited for that.
Thank you for attending that and my steed appreciate that. And Councilmember Overholzer for, uh, Echo.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, uh, myself and, uh, my alternate councilwoman Farrar attended the, uh, Echo meeting on the 13th. Um, there were, uh, some, you know, the dust is still settling there at Echo with the rea- realignment of, uh, leadership there and, uh, there is a moderator there, um, who was doing a great job, but, uh, there was a consensus of unity. There was an announcement from the county that we have a $70 million shortage statewide based on reporting fee collection being down from sale of homes. So that reflects a five plus million dollar shortage in Clark County. Um, that shortage is based on, again, less report, reporting fees, decreased movement in the housing market. Uh, we are focused on, uh, narrowing the focus to prioritize the funds to the three main objectives they pointed out were shelter beds, outreach and rent assistance, uh, to help prevent people from being on the streets. Um, there was a subcommittee created to focus on inclement weather rapid response. And, uh, all in all, I thought the meeting was very productive. It was nice to get to meet some of the people there, um, and I was very pleased to, uh, see that they are moving forward. Um, hopefully within the agenda to get some things done and not just, uh, have meetings to talk about it, but actually create some action items. So that was, that was my takeaway.
So, thank you for that. Uh, next up, Councilmember Davis.
Yes, so I had a meeting with the Clark County mosquito, uh, control district. And they reported that they came in, um, they finished the year $110,000 below the approved budget. Uh, mostly housekeeping, um, to do's that were, that we had to go over and that they're gonna start, uh, the season's gonna be starting soon, so they're getting ready to hire some people and, um, that is about the gist of the mosquito control.
Awesome. And then I did attend the urban county policy board. That was just, uh, presentations. Uh, Mr. Hersick did very well. A plus for his. So we, uh, then now we'll grade them and try to get the grants for, um, those projects. Any other reports before we move on? That I missed? All right. Hearing none, we'll move on to, uh, looks like we have a new employee to introduce. Mr. Crummett?
Good evening, council. Uh, I want to introduce to you our new building official, Josh Weeks. Uh, Josh has been in the construction field for over 25 years. He worked in the HVAC electrical plumbing, uh, field before becoming an inspector in 2000. Josh has worked as a special inspector for six years and a project inspector on schools for nine years in Southern California. In 2015, he moved to Oregon and worked for the city of Portland for nine years as a combination building inspector, senior building inspector and commercial inspector supervisor. Uh, Josh is married and joined by his wife, uh, with, he's, has two, uh, boys ages 21 and 14. He lives here in Battleground, Bonus, and, uh, for fun, he likes to play golf and snowboard.
Anything else you'd like to say, Josh?
No, just want to say thank you. Um, it's an honor and a pleasure to serve, excuse me, to serve as the building official for this great community. And, uh, it's always been a goal of mine and for it to be part of the community that I live in is even sweeter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weeks. It's great to hear that you live here and, uh, have a, uh, obviously a large state and community. So look forward to seeing good things.
Thank you.
Uh, next presentation is by Deputy City Manager Farrar on, uh, the traffic cams.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, when this matter was last brought to you in December, the city council directed staff to conduct some outreach to vendors of automated traffic safety cameras or ATS cameras, gather some basic information on potential costs, uh, specifically for, uh, school speed zone cameras, then report back. Uh, staff spoke with representatives from four companies that work in the field, um, specifically Conduent, Novo Global, Traffic Logix and Vera Mobility. Each company's business model is about the same as its competitors with some slight variation from company to company. Typically, though, most companies in the industry tend to lease their product, uh, not sell. That includes the ATS equipment, both the cameras and the software that go along with it. Uh, most awful, most also offer varying levels of back of office administrative services, things like, um, infraction preparation, processing, as well as public education campaign, that sort of thing. Although some of the companies that we spoke with, uh, seem to favor larger clients, each said they'd at least consider responding to an RFP from the city of Battleground if we so choose to put one out. While any potential cost will be determined as a result of that, um, RFP and the number of locations that, uh, we'd be looking at, a general rule of thumb is that for an ATS program, it encourages lease costs of $4,000 to $6,000 per camera per month. Um, all things not being equal, some, most cities have multiple cameras at individual locations. You might have one camera going, pointing in one direction, another camera pointing the other direction at the same location. Another point for the city council to consider, um, beyond the primary costs associated with, um, acquiring the necessary equipment is that there may be other secondary costs that could represent an additional burden from the program. For example, based on conversations with municipal court personnel from other cities that have implemented similar ATS programs, the introduction of a program here in Battleground would likely trigger an increase in municipal court costs, including the potential to add staff to support a larger traffic docket. How much of an increase is difficult to stay at this time, however, based on anecdotal conversations with staff from other, um, um, agencies and the vendors themselves. Typically what happens is when cities start these programs, they see an, uh, increase in the number of traffic citations by a factor of four or five. So if you're doing 100 a month, now all of a sudden you're doing 400 to 500 a month. It just depends. Typically, what you also see is you see that spike for a short period of time. And then as people become aware to the cameras, you see that kind of taper down as well. All that said, in the event the city council wishes staff to pursue this matter further, we would ask some guidance from you. Uh, specifically whether or not you would like us to prepare an RFP to solicit interest from qualified firms. That concludes our presentation. We're happy to take any questions you may have.
Mayor McCoy too, I believe Mr. Bowman is online now, so those if you want to verify attendance before we continue.
Councilmember Bowman, can you confirm that you are present on Zoom?
I am here.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry, yeah. That was from the prior thing, so you can take.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, you got me.
Any questions for traffic cams? Please go ahead and buzz in or do you have something?
Is, this is just for the school zones?
For school zones, that's correct.
He's looking for a direction if we want to go out for an RFP, so. Any other questions or, uh? No, everybody's decided.
Mr. Mayor, I, uh, I, are you looking for consensus?
Some kind of direction in terms of what our next step should be. If you choose to make no action whatsoever, we'd like to have that direction as well.
Uh, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm a little concerned of the cost and the burden and that I don't, I I would like to have a little bit more concrete information on far as like what, what's gonna be? What are we looking at? It seems a little bit broad for me right now. To, to start the process and, and get this, that there's an unknown amount of additional now more staff possibly. Pros and cons, um, I would, I would not be making that any statement of.
Okay. Does anybody have a strong opinion, one where, are you on, okay, sorry, go ahead, Councilmember Farrar.
So, um, I don't disagree that there's obviously, um, some concern on the number of traffic violations due to speeding in the school zones. At this time, I thought we would start to see the numbers come in and see if those officers that were posted at these sites, if we're making a difference in the behavior of our drivers. So I would like to see those numbers before I give you a direction to go move forward.
When do we think we'll have those?
Um, the numbers have come in. I know Mark was just needing to take some time to pull the data together to show the differences because we did them. We had the traffic counters out there the last week that the officers were doing emphasis and then we held them for the week after. So he's just compiling that data where our plan was to bring that back as an admin report on the March 4th meeting. Or we may be able to send it out to council prior to that too, just for information.
Be ideal, it's better to see data before instead of.
Yeah.
Get some time to digest.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, for me personally, I'd like to. Or, thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, for me personally, I think we should move forward on an RP because, uh, I think it is a one good layer of enforcement. It is not the solve, the solve all when it comes to enforcement, but I think that along, it gives, it gives our officers more flexibility in being able to um, kind of be a force multiplier on altering behavior in, uh, certain areas, especially areas that are, have shown to have, um, uh, an issue with speeder, speeders. I think the cost that the, uh, deputy city manager, uh, acknowledges, that's cost that, that is gonna be there regardless of what city you are in terms of deploying, uh, something like this. And it's not like we're going to, uh, just solely rely on, on this in all parts of our city. We're talking about a very central narrow focus in a school zone. Uh, and then any particular associated cost, once this is implement, once and if this is implemented, uh, it, it basically shows that, you know, we have a problem when it comes to speeders, right? And these are people that are, uh, that we want to alter their behavior in terms of making sure that they are abiding by the law. They're not speeding in school zones. Uh, and so I think once that behavior is altered, uh, those, any associated costs that we would see in our court systems or court system, uh, would certainly start to taper off like the, uh, deputy city manager, uh, stated. So again, I think, and, and, and hopefully we can explore some potential options of grants uh, that may or may not be available, uh, in terms of deploying that in the school zone. But again, it's, I don't think it's a bad thing to take a look and deploy it in school zone. So I would be in favor.
Okay.
I am interested as well in moving forward on it. Um, I thought you had previously said that it ends up being cost neutral or.
or that we end up making money on some of this. Is that still the case?
You typically you see is revenue exceeds the expenditures, yes. Or at least the information I've seen from other cities, that is the case.
Thank you.
Mr. Overholzer?
Well, Pine? Yeah, I actually, I agree with Councilwoman Ferrera. I'd like to see that, those reports back from the, the new updates on the speeders and the school zones. I will say, I'm not a huge fan of cameras in general, but the one area I think that I, I believe they could be very effective is the school zones. I mean, at the end of the day, our kids are our most precious asset we have in the city. And if it makes an effect in a positive way of slowing people down in those areas, I'd be all for that. And I understand the additional workload that it might put on the courts initially, but I would believe that after a while that would probably taper down and become more manageable to a point where we could sustain that labor wise and figure out how to support that and maintain that to keep people from speeding in school zones. I guess if that's what it takes, that's what it takes, but unfortunate, but I would be a fan of doing that. I would like to see those members, though, come back and just to solidify that, but that's all I have.
So what I'm hearing is a holding pattern. Let's look at the traffic enforcement numbers and maybe push this off.
You can bring it back on March 4 and hopefully get those numbers sent to you.
If we can get those numbers out and before the March 4.
Do you think that's the whole, Mr. Say?
Yeah, Councilmember, our Deputy Mayor Bowman, do you have anything you wanted to chime in on that?
No, I'm good with this, bringing it back in March 4.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Yeah. Go ahead.
So I was just wondering, because we're talking about the revenue and the municipal courts and what this could bring, but also the costs as well. And I'm just wondering, are, is there a way for us looking at the data that we've already been given about the number of infractions that we've seen, taking those numbers, and then also seeing if it would help alleviate some of those costs from the municipal court? Sorry, I know you're giving me this weird look.
Sure, I 100% understand what you're asking.
No, I didn't, I didn't catch it.
Okay, so we're talking about the cost that this could possibly, you know, create a cost in the courts due to, right? And so I'm just wondering, is there a way for us to see if, to run the numbers to see, would we be breaking even if we put these ATS cameras in? Or could, could we potentially get a revenue that could even possibly be used towards the cost?
Are you asking what would an FTE for a court employee cost to administer this?
No, well, it, right, I mean, it's wherever the cost would be, obviously, I mean, we're talking about, it could go, you set up to like 400 or 500. Now you, we're looking at 100 per month, but now we're looking at $400 to $500. So that could be possibly implement.
Yeah, I don't know what our exact number is here in Battleground. I use that kind of as a, as a scale. Typically, what the other cities have told us is when they implement this system, they see a spike of four to five times of the number of infractions. And so I, it's hard for me to answer your question in terms of, you know, how many is it going to be here in Battleground? I don't know.
Okay, because I know several months ago, he had brought in a slight, a presentation that gave us the numbers over a period of time, and if we would have been able to.
It was a snapshot, a snapshot in time.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, obviously, it wouldn't be exact, but yeah, okay.
I mean, it is possible, you were saying, basically, you know, Sam, which reminded me that you do cost benefit analysis, but you do it basically as a best guess based, based on the data you see and see in front of you.
So this may be kind of RFP related, but do you know if you can do like contracts for like a year or two? And if it ends up really working and people change their behavior that we can go away with it?
Yeah, the contracts that I've, that I've seen from a couple of different cities, they're for a period of time. I couldn't tell if it's two years, three years. It's less than five years, essentially, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, well, we'll revisit that once we have some numbers to look at then. Next up, it's our Deputy City Manager again, Battleground Beautification Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In test, in anticipation, future growth in capital projects here in Battleground, the city and its partners at Wasdott are exploring the potential for roundabouts at multiple locations around town. Consistent with the City Council's guiding principles that were adopted in 2019, guidelines that put an emphasis on beautification efforts that serve most of the city and improve the look in facilities, the look of public facilities, staff recommends the City Council consider the creation of what we're calling a Battleground Beautification Committee, or BGBC for short. The initial purpose of the BGBC would be to provide guidance to the council on matters related to the design and aesthetics of roundabouts. As council knows, many communities across the country choose to incorporate artistic or aesthetically pleasing elements in their roundabout design. It helps to provide a sense of place that's unique to each location. Subject to City Council direction, staff also believes there's potential to perhaps grow the committee at some point, grow its purpose, I mean, perhaps to include the review of other types of public art around town. This could include standalone amenities, things like sculptures and statues and structures. It could include integrated amenities, think like facades, pavements, that sort of thing. And then applied amenities, which would be public art, like murals that are attached to a building itself. We don't have much specifics on that at this time. It's just something that we think is worthy of consideration. If the City Council is amenable to this new committee, staff recommends a five-member body to start. We'd like to compose it of representatives from the Planning Commission, one representative, one representative from the PACE board, a representative from the Battleground School District, the local arts community, and the local business community. That's five. If the City Council supports this recommendation, we staff would reach out to each of these groups and solicit their interest in participating and serving, and then present it to the City Council at a future date for its concurrence. Lastly, we recommend that if this city council does wish to form this committee, that it be staffed by folks from city administration, myself and the Communication Manager PIO, with technical guidance to come from other staff from other departments as necessary. Any recommendations, of course, that the committee makes would be subject to review and approval by the City Council. That concludes our presentation. We're available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Councilmember Cortez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, on the surface, it doesn't sound like a bad thing to pursue. How would this be different? Why would we need to form a committee, though? Wouldn't our, like our, formerly our parks advisory or PACE, excuse me, wouldn't this be something that could fall under their umbrella?
It could, but we think it kind of goes across their area of expertise per se. We're talking about something that's, would be a, something to point to with pride for the entire community. So it touches on a lot of different areas. We think that the public arcs, public arts folks in the community might have a desire to be involved in this as well. We think it makes sense to have someone from the business community, the school district particularly. We think we'd like to have them involved as well. There's a lot of different ways you can shape it. We, we think this is probably a good way to start. Kind of dip our toes in the water and see how it goes moving forward from there.
So do you envision members that serve on this new ad hoc committee to serve, you know, staggered terms? Is that how you envision it?
Yeah, we, we do. We haven't put much thought in. We want to see first the City Council's support of this idea. And if the City Council is, we'd have to draw more specifics, obviously, and that would be one thing we need to pay more attention to.
And I imagine like whatever the issue is before them, whether it's public art, or you had mentioned roundabouts, things that are, aesthetics within the community, they would hold open houses and they would be kind of like the front group tasked with that?
Yeah, kind of, kind of TBD to be, to answer your question, but yeah, we, there'd be some kind of public involvement aspect, I think, is what you're hitting at. So yes, we'd like to include that as well. And ultimately, if they have a design, we'd bring it back to City Council for thumbs up, thumbs down, for lack of a better phrase.
But these would be city-specific projects, so they wouldn't be, obviously, if Washdott does anything like with roundabouts, they're going to do what they're going to do, not really involving this.
Well, we've, we had some discussion with them already.
Yeah, so if we, I mean, the design of the roundabout and the approval goes through Washdott, but we talked about this in our last quarterly meeting. If there's specific, you know, aspects that the city of Battleground wants to have within those, then having this plan in place as those are coming online is, is the way to go.
Be helpful.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilmember Overholzer?
Yeah, I'm a huge fan of that. I just think having local citizens have a buy-in, have a say in the beautification of the town with art and aesthetics is, I, I mean, I love seeing the Welcome to Battleground sign as you're coming in off of the corner of Eaton and 503. I would love to see a roundabout be something that would be maybe that same kind of idea coming in from 502 eastbound and maybe coming south on 503 coming into town. But yeah, I, I'm going to say this publicly, I guess. I'm not a huge fan of some of the things that happen on the other side of the river, but one thing I can say is driving through some of the areas and neighborhoods, they have some beautiful murals. And it's very cool to see neighborhoods or the community represented in art in, within the city and with the beautification of Maine and things like that that we're going to be looking towards. I think it'd be a cool addition and again, having citizens have their say in that, be a big fan of that.
Well, personally, I think if Wasdott forces us to have a roundabout, we somehow don't work Bigfoot into that, that we've dropped the ball. So I'd like that as question one on the committee interview panel.
There's a lot of.
Maybe there might be some more, yeah, some, but it sounds like there's more coming, but I like the idea and the forethought that went into it, so.
There's a lot of interesting designs. Attached to staff report, we had a sample of some different images of, of roundabouts you see around the country. Bend, Oregon, I know they've got several of them and interesting designs and kind of weird stuff, but it actually looks really cool. There's one there with kayaks. They somehow they were kayaks into a roundabout. It's kind of interesting. And so there's, you know, as many ideas as you can have, that's, you know, it's, it's a good thing to have. And if you want to have a Sasquatch, we can talk about a Sasquatch, I suppose.
I mean, might as well make it fun, right? Anybody else? So we have consensus to move forward with this committee? I'm seeing, I guess, and again, appreciate the forethought on that.
Thank you.
Well thought out. Next up, we have Citizens Communications. Before I go through my spiel, I do want to remind everybody that on the development agreement, we've already had the hearings, so this is your only opportunity to talk on that. It's just the general citizens communications. And I'll talk more about that as we get in. That was just my inexperience, we, that we didn't have the presentation and the hearing at the same time, but we tabled it, so no harm done. So I'll now open the meeting for Citizens Communications. Individuals are limited to three minutes to provide comments. This time is an opportunity to hear from various members of the public in a limited public forum and not an opportunity for extended comments or dialogue. Although the City Council desires to allow the opportunity for public comment, the business of the city must proceed in an orderly, timely manner. The council may not be able to respond to individual comments and may refer citizens to a staff member to assist. And I have one signed up here, Mr. Spiller, talking on Northbrook. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselors, I am speaking on the, with regard to the developers agreement. I know you've, you've heard from me a lot on that. You've heard from some of my employees who live and work in the village feel passionately about this, heard from other unrelated parties, business owners, citizens who have strong feelings about this. I, I don't want to rehash a lot of that. You've heard safety concerns, you've heard parking concerns, compatible use concerns, legal concerns, a lot of, a lot of concerns about this. Really, the last point, the only point I want to bring up at the moment is just the duration of this proposed agreement. You guys know, you've, you've studied this. It's, it's a seven-year deal. It gives seven years for there to be a, to be an apartment complex put in here. We, we need affordable housing in this town. We need more local jobs. This developers agreement doesn't give us either one of those. It's not optimized for, for affordable housing. It's not optimized for local jobs. It's optimized for a seven-year lockup for land speculation. The biggest thing that the city can do to attract investment and the right kind of development is just to give a level playing field, just to give a stable regulatory environment to not go changing the rules on a one-off basis for a particular, particular interest. My, my economic interests are that I bought a lot of adjacent land specifically to develop it for commercial purposes. So I've been super transparent about that. I am trying to bring hundreds of jobs to Battleground, working on projects to that end. Giving, giving this, these, this particular, making this particular deal goes against that. It says that you can trade in your commercial land for residential uses. And again, I don't have anything against Mr. Campos. I, I respect the interest of speculation and development. Mr. Campos is, has tried to sell this project to me and others on the basis that he's basically got a deal done with the city. You guys are here to just ratify it, and he'll have the only apartment complex on Commerce Avenue. I don't want that to happen for all the reasons I've stated. So I would just, again, encourage and ask you guys to give us a lane, level playing field. Don't, don't give a special, a special deal. It's not a good deal, and I appreciate your time and your consideration. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Absolutely. Would anybody else sign up online or otherwise late to the, oh, we have some.
No, sir.
Nobody online? All right.
Good evening. I'm Dave Campos. I'm one of the owners of the property. There's been a lot of talk of this site being jobs dirt or industrial dirt. It was planned and approved by the city as phase three of Battleground Village Townhomes. And so it's always had a residential air component to that site. It was locked up under a DA to industrial when we purchased it. That DA then expired in 2020. We, then it was rezoned, I'm sorry, by the city of Battleground to D Downtown Commercial. I worked with this council, some of the members of this council, to, for three years on this project. So, you know, we've, we've stayed with it for three years to move this project forward. This isn't a land bank. This, I, I have several hundred apartments in Clark County. We're developers. I have a, a track record of providing affordable housing and working with not-for-profits. But, you know, and I'm not going to throw stones back and forth with somebody else. This master plan of Battleground Village is on the north side of the industrial area. So on the south side of, I think it's 11th, is Battleground, whatever they call it, the, but it's the core jobs area. That's your industrial area. To the north is the retail area, and that's our live-work community. That's housing. That's restaurants, that's stores, that's offices that have never seen tenants. But the viability of that project requires people to live there. The viability of, of having an employment base out there means people need to live there. We have investors to teed up to build this thing. We were like, this is a huge project. I mean, 132 units, I mean, that's 200 people out the street. We're 20,000 doors short in Clark County for housing. Like, we don't have to look around very far to see that this town, that we're exploding, we're bursting at the seams. I mean, people are coming in here from Portland, from California, from everywhere for the quality of life. I'm not, I've been in Battleground since 1994. I have no interest in ruining this town. I'm an investor in this town. I mean, I can throw a stone and hit buildings I own. I have no interest in seeing anything become not viable or blinded or anything like that. But like I said, I, I just want to stick to the point that this has been the retail village. This is part of the retail village. These live-work or these ground floor units. These live-work, or these ground floor units, they provide, they provide parking, which we're not required to give under the downtown zone. And it helps people that are mobility impaired, age impaired, anything similar to that. I mean, these, there is a market for these and, and people do need them. So with that, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, last call? All right, we'll move on to consent agenda then. Uh, consent agenda consists of city council study session, regular meeting minutes. Uh, item B is claim voucher, item C is claim vouchers, D is payroll, and E is a humane society contract for services. Does any member of council see a need to add or subtract from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries unanimously. And next up, we have ordinance number 2024-01, Northbrook Development Agreement. Uh, again, uh, there's not a, uh, a hearing on this one, we already had that, it's been tabled, so we will now have the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor McCoy. Um, coming up on your screen is the conceptual plan that is in front of you that, um, the development agreement is based off of. So this, uh, property was part of the original Battleground Village Development Agreement that has since expired. After the expiration of the DA, the city rezoned the property to Downtown Commercial and it was the best fit for the existing development in the area. Uh, one implication of that is that Downtown Commercial does not require any onsite parking. Uh, the village area is already under park, so this proposed development agreement for an apartment project would allow for some ground floor residential, which is not currently allowed in the downtown zone, and multifamily parking requirements with just a minor reduction in parking not to exceed the 25 spaces less than our Battleground Municipal Code standards. The project would contain a commercial component at the south, at the corners of Southeast 10th Street and Southeast Commerce Avenue and Southeast 11th and Southeast Commerce. Uh, the project would also be required to provide the 15% required open space and additional, uh, open space requirement that's consistent with, uh, multifamily projects. And would also, uh, be can, required additional ADA accessible units. Um, a question that came out of the last meeting too is just the economics of what this project could potentially bring. Uh, just doing some rough numbers based on, um, other projects that we've constructed in the last couple of years within the city. So it looks like the annual revenue, which that would include property tax, um, utility tax and sales tax for, from the additional residence or commercial space would be about $441,000. Uh, the one-time revenue during construction, um, which would include the SDC's sales tax on a construction and the permitting, be about $2.6 million. So just so you have those numbers. And, um, I will turn it back over to council if you have any additional questions.
Before we do that, Ms. Lilly, would we receive any comments that need to be entered in the record?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. Um, council member DeRushers?
I'm curious on our future housing stock, which what's, what we have now and what's coming if this would make a difference?
Um, I believe it'll, I'll refer to Sam, but I believe we are, we're kind of right there at our percentage requirements for what we set as a goal for multifamily versus single family. But this would be on, on track with that, I believe.
So it align with that, then?
I think, I don't know if we've finished running those numbers for the comp, the new comp plan, but, um...
Uh, Aaron is correct, we do have sufficient capacity to meet our housing allocations and I'll present that in more detail in the future. And correct, we don't have the specific numbers yet on exactly the types of housing we need for certain income brackets in our city, but we're working on that. And we do have a sufficient supply of land around town if we do need to do some upzoning or something like that.
I do have another question. I, I don't recall if there was gonna be any low-income units. I'm hearing ADA, right?
Yeah, um, we didn't, that hasn't been addressed as part of the development agreement, so it wouldn't be a requirement. We did add that they would need to have additional ADA accessible units because of the ground floor.
Hmm, how many?
It just says a developer must ensure that additional ground floor units provide ADA accessibility, including accessible design features such as limited exterior stairs and curbs, accessible door thresholds and limited interior obstructions where feasible. Uh, the property shall also meet or exceed the state requirement for ADA accessible units.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Councilmember Cortez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so, you know, anytime we have a development, DA, anything come before us, you know, I always kind of go in it with a mindset that, you know, I wanna see how we can make things work because anybody that's willing to invest in our community and better our community is, I think, um, is, I think, somebody who wants to, to be in our community and to engage in those activities. Uh, so, you know, I'm always predisposed to eagerly seeing how we can make things work. However, uh, from the last meeting to today, um, and, and, uh, the first gentleman that spoke, uh, on this, uh, made the, um, you know, declaration that, uh, this property has been, uh, sought out to, you know, to sell, to u- use the, the entitlements to be able to sell. And so I guess I, I, I would be, which, that concerns me because I want, I want something that's fully vested in our community. And so I would ask staff, uh, city manager, um, have you or any of your, uh, department heads communicated with the, uh, developer of this? Have they communicated their willingness to sell this to any third party or to us? I mean, what?
So we haven't, I mean, not until recently. We, we've received pre-applications on the concept plan and we've also received some pre-application on another, um, reiteration, which is a live-work project for this. Um, I know in passing, Mr. Kermit had asked if they were willing or looking to entertain the idea of selling the property and that definitely came to the table as, you know, there's always, for the right price, a question of whether that could be for sale.
Who, who said that?
The developer.
The developer asked us?
We asked them in, just in passing because they submitted a different application prior to the development agreement coming back. So we were curious if they were still looking to entitle the property, if they were looking to sell that and so forth.
Got it, okay.
Yeah.
All right. I mean, so it looks like, I mean, to me, that suggests, you know, looking for the highest bidder, right? To, to sell it off. I, I, I want, you know, you know, I, I always use the example of, you know, like TJ Fontanet and there's, there's others in our community. But when he first, uh, came and wanted to put together the huge, um, development that Walmart sits in and all the other adjacent commercial properties sit in, you know, he, he said, hey, I'm, I'm heavily invested in this community, I'm not leaving. I'm not gonna be, you know, gonna cut and run. And that's why we kinda got behind him and we punched through Parkway, or not Parkway, but, uh, Scotten. And, uh, and he fulfilled his obligation on servicing that debt, um, and taking over that debt until the, uh, property could service it on its own. And, and he continues to do that even with the apartments that he's put in and the apartments he's gonna, uh, perhaps even, uh, put some more in. And so, you know, that is one example of the kind of developer that I want, uh, fully vested in our community. I wanna be able to support, you know, those kind of efforts. Uh, I, I'm hesitant though because it sounds like this may not have that same feel. Um, and so, um, last meeting, I was more of a, how do we make this work? This meeting, I'm kinda like, I'm probably, I'm probably, I'm, I'm cautious about moving forward or not just because of this new information that I have, so.
Good?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember DeRushers?
So I am concerned about the timeline because, you know, I've been very supportive of affordable housing and ADA, um, accessible housing is very appealing to me. But I, I'm concerned because we do have a housing crisis and we need housing now. So if they have up to seven years to complete the, to start the project?
Uh, once a project has preliminary approval, then it is vested and then it is good for seven years. This is, uh, it doesn't have preliminary approval at this point. It's gone through a non-project SEPA to pass the development agreement and it's gone through a pre-application.
Is that a standard length of time? Or is that the seven years or is that something?
That's state.
Can't be negotiated?
No, that's a state RCW.
Yeah, so I am reluctant because of the potential for delay with that, which is, again, very hard for me because I'm, I want affordable housing, I want ADA accessible housing. Um, but I just don't know if we can, if, when it's gonna happen. So it's concerning to me, thank you.
Just a procedural question. Uh, i- if, um, if this is, uh, voted down, um, can it then come back? Or is it, or is it completely, um, finished? I mean, we could approve a developers' agreement at any time, correct?
Correct.
Saying yes or no, or, or saying no doesn't preclude it from coming back with maybe changes that council wants to see, whereas saying yes would then, uh, start the contract, correct?
Yeah, saying yes would be agreeing to the way it is written today in the ordinance that's provided. Um, turning it down, that is correct. You could request that we bring this back with additional changes or look at some different designs.
And I, I just say that for clarification for council. Um, so, uh, seeing any, any other comments? Um, seeing none, I would entertain a motion either, um, to amend the development agreement or to approve it as is. Um, at this point, I'd really rather not table this again. So floor is open for motions. Sometimes you have to make a motion to vote no.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, um, I'd like to make a motion for ordinance number 2024-01, the Northbrook Development Agreement. No, I'm making a motion regarding ordinance number 2024-01, Northbrook, Northbrook Development Agreement. You approve it? Yeah, to adopt it.
To adopt.
Thank you.
And we have it. Mr. Bowman, thank you for the second. Lilly, would you please read the title?
Ordinance by title, Ms. Lilly. Yes.
Ordinance number 2024-01, an ordinance adopting a development agreement between the City of Battleground, Washington and Northbrook BG LLC.
Thank you. Did, okay.
Opportunity. Um, I have concerns with going forward with this DA because, um, you have local businesses right there, right now, that are wanting to grow and they are already scarce on the space that we provide for this, uh, commercial properties. Uh, on top of that, I see the parking and I know that's, uh, a concern that we have in the downtown area. I don't feel that this is addressing that concern. There's, um, on top of that, I know a lot of citizens in that area, the residents have concern about parking on the streets. And so we talk about this, um, this DA is gonna be providing these parking places, but I see that they're gonna be used for the residents and, and not for what we need. Um, and I, I have, just to finish up, that we have, again, job opportunities. We, I, I understand that we have a, a housing need, but we also, in the City of Battleground, we have a job need as well. And here we have, uh, space to provide more jobs to come to our community and we're gonna be taking that away for, we don't even know now. You guys haven't, you guys don't have that, an ADA, uh, number for, um, for the residents there. So I would, yeah.
Always appreciate clarification on where people are standing. Any other conversation? If, uh, we would do the roll call vote, please? And we will just, uh, Deputy Mayor Bowman, we will do the roll call vote and then we'll just ask for yours verbally, once we're locked in.
Perfect.
Once we're locked in, let me know. Okay, Deputy Mayor Bowman?
No.
Are you there? Well?
Yeah, no.
We just losing? Yeah, I think, well, I think we have a, we have a result regardless.
No.
Motion fails with, uh, with the lost connection.
That would be an extension, Mayor McCoy, which would be one, yes.
I'm a no.
Okay. Uh, moving on to Lewisville Satellite Water System presentation. Mr. Hersick?
Good evening, councillor, give me one second, share my screen. So I'm here tonight to talk about the, uh, Lewisville Satellite Water System. Uh, what that means is this is essentially a private system that's owned and operated by CPU for the residents in this area. Um, the well that serves this system has been, over time, uh, become unreliable. Um, in the summer, um, they've had trouble meeting their water needs for these 12 residents. Uh, we've been talking for many years with CPU about the essentially tying into the city's water system, so these 12 property owners would become city customers. Um, it's a pretty straightforward process. The city has a water line that goes up the street there that the church put in when they built the parking lot. Um, CPU has water line that goes throughout the neighborhood, so essentially the water line would just get connected to ours. The well would be abandoned and our meters would get put in and they'd become our customers. I'm here tonight because the city's code requires that city council approve, uh, the four people that are outside the city limits. So, um, the eight people that are in city limits, it's essentially automatic, but because the four property owners are outside, uh, we need council's consensus to, to serve them. Uh, CPU would be doing all the work for the project, they'd be doing the construction, paying the SDCs for our water connections and everything like that. So that is about all I have and happy to answer any questions.
Just chime in if you have questions, pad's not working.
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Sorry, go ahead, yes, Deputy Mayor?
Um, yeah, so this is the, this is the property above Onsdorf there, correct?
Yeah, it's the northwest corner of Onsdorf and 503, so the 12 properties there.
And these are the, these are the people that have come in and told us, don't ever annex us, don't ever bring us into the city, don't ever have been anti-city, but they want water. Is that correct?
I, I believe a couple of them have been, but I know a couple have recently annexed into the city. So I think it's kind of 50/50.
The one that annexed in is, is, these, these four, I'm 100% sure were anti-city. Um, we annexed the one just to the, the south there, they were anti-city, you know, when we were looking at this annexation to begin with. And that's my only concern is, is, you know, if you want, you want our water, come into the city. Um, o- otherwise, you know, sorry about your bad luck, that's kinda how I feel about it.
Any, any other, uh, comments? Council, questions, concerns?
I mean, I, I, I would, um, I would like to see, uh, if these property owners want access to this water. As Deputy Mayor Bowman suggested, I would like to see how eager they are to come into the city. Uh, we have a great city. Um, and, uh, I would like to see this happen under a annexation that they initiate rather than this agreement.
Go ahead.
I'd like to know what their concerns are as to why they don't want to be part of the city. I mean, I can draw my own conclusions, but I'd like to know. I mean, cause first thought is if you become part of the city, then you're gonna be forced into the development of the city. And I'm looking at those houses over there and. Yeah, that's all I'm gonna say.
It's their choice whether they develop their own land. Uh, Deputy Mayor DeRosers, sorry.
Oh.
You just got a promotion. Just used to say that.
Sorry, I just lost my train of thought because I got distracted by Troy.
Sorry.
Um, no, it's okay. So if these got, if they did get annexed in, would they be, what would they be zoned?
That's R seven up there, isn't it?
Because the new, the tax law that I'm pretty bitter about, that they did get annexed in, that they get taxed based on the property's value for R seven.
Best use.
Right, so that's why I would be reluctant to come into a city at this point.
Do they not get, uh, taxed that way if they're just in urban growth? Sam, do you know?
No, well, no, not if it's developed. It's because it's R seven.
No, 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 I'm asking, so is, does that, does that slip over once you get annexed into the city?
I might have missed the first part of the question.
So what, what, uh, Councilmember DeRosers is asking, will they be taxed at best use of that property based on the current zoning? And I'm asking, aren't they already taxed that way or does that happen once you annex in?
Well, it's a question for the tax assessors, but the, the assessors are typically gonna apply the current zoning.
Regardless.
Currently, it's county zoning. When it would, when they would be annexed, it would, then the city zoning would apply and that might factor into their taxes. Or sorry, I shouldn't say taxes, their property value.
Yeah, it's like three hundred thousand per acre or something.
Yeah, but it, but it shouldn't be up to us. I mean, if their, if their assessed value or taxes go up, it's because the value of their property is gonna increase because they're coming into a city.
Right, but that would be why they don't want to. She was saying, why wouldn't they want to? That's the reason I wouldn't want to if I, if I were. Because it's gonna cost more.
But they're gonna be able to sell their property for more if they, if they choose to develop it, not forced to develop it, but choose to develop.
I believe other considerations, I believe, if they're not in the city, they pay fifty percent more for their water bill. Is that correct?
That's correct. They'll pay a hundred fifty percent for their water bill.
Any other questions? Concerns?
Well, I, I, I feel similar to, uh, Councilmember Cortez about asking what their thoughts are, if that's possible.
Are they here? Is that who's here? Mr. Hersick, if, um, just game theory here, if, let's say, uh, council votes this down, obviously the other eight properties can come in without councilmatic action. Uh, so that, so, uh, they, they come in, uh, the well now is in the city. Uh, do we then become the proud owners of a well serving the county?
I mean, right now, the well is in the city, so.
Okay.
It's, it's operated by CPU. That wouldn't change with, with any of this, so. And I, just physically, I don't think we can bring the, the aid in without bringing everyone. You'd have to do so much work on the system to essentially have parallel lines that it, it wouldn't be worth CPU's time.
I figured there was some reason that. So, um, if, uh, if council decides, uh, to vote this down, then we have twelve properties that may have, uh, a dearth of water in the summer.
So, so what happens if we don't include them? They're just out of luck, have to find their own water source?
Well, that's what he's just saying. We'd have to run possibly parallel lines and.
Yeah, I mean, at this point, they would keep using the well they have and in the summer, they have to do what they have to do.
All twelve of them, including the eight city residents, would then have low water availability. And, and, and that's the crux of my concern, while, while I understand the, the hesitation and, you know, the four properties that came in here, and I, I believe I was at that, that was about two years ago, so. Um, to use a Shane thing, previous council back when I was here. Um, I do remember that and yeah, it does kind of sting when you hear somebody doesn't like your city. Um, and they don't want to be a part of it, but at the end of the day, that's, that's what they've chosen. Um, I hesitate to punish the eight properties that have chosen to be part of the city. And those four properties are going to be paying fifty percent more in their water bill for the right to pay more taxes in the county or about the same. It's not a tax increase to come into the city, but it's.
Not usual.
Yeah, so they're, they will be paying more for the privilege, so. That's my thoughts on it. Councilmember DeRosers?
Yeah, I just had a comment that I'm all, I'm all in favor of being a good neighbor, so I support, you know, the whole project with the four properties that are not in the city limits.
So I would move to approve the converting existing, uh, CPU water customer that are currently on the Louisville Satellite Water System to the old city's water system.
Second.
Motion on the floor, second. Miss Sully, would you please read the ordinance? Title?
Uh, there is no ordinance. I just can do it with consensus.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on previous one, my bad. I should cross that off. I was hoping to get through one meeting without making a mistake, maybe next year.
Well, why does it have a suggestion for it?
Uh, no, uh, no, I, I was just, no, she, they're right. Um, so any other questions or discussions on CPU water?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, uh, ask for a roll call vote on this.
Sure, absolutely. And once we're locked in, if you'd let Mr. Bowman know?
Councilmember Bowman, how, what say you?
I'm a yes.
Councilmember Bowman, how do you vote?
Yes.
I don't know why it's not coming through all of a sudden.
Maybe we can get a text.
Yeah.
Yeah. Pretty convenient. He's never been a man to skirt votes.
Mr. Bowman votes yes.
Looks like it passes six to one. Okay, moving on to administrative reports, uh, Mr. Crummett and Parks Master Plan, Turkey Property.
All right, thank you. Give me a second to share my screen here. Yeah, that's at the, after council. Okay, uh, we're at the part of the planning stage with our Parks Master Planning Works to get to a preferred alternative for each of the properties. Those include Remy, Gardner Oaks and Fairgrounds Park. And then the fourth is the Turkey Site. I think we're all familiar with that is it's approximately a mile east of Battleground. The number one, uh, the, the, the sports complex came out as kind of the preferred alternative when we went out to the public and had an open house and also had other, um, citizens participate in different ways. Um, and then kind of a second was what was called Nature Connection. Uh, I specifically want to get further direction from council on whether we proceed with the sports complex as the preferred alternative because that will involve more time and costs such as studying parking, traffic, uh, looking at some prelim, preliminary engineering grading. So I kind of wanted to just pause on that one and highlight a few of the challenges. The first is, uh, its location. It's a mile outside the city. It'd really only be accessible by vehicles, uh, not a great highway to ride a bike on. There's no sidewalks. The site isn't, uh, very flat. It would require extensive grading. I'm not su, you know, there'd probably have to be different levels that the fields would be located on. And it's not quite large enough for a full-size, uh, sports complex. Um, our consultants recommend at least twenty-five acres. This has, um, around twenty-three acres of buildable area. And, uh, the goal would be to get full, four-size soccer pitches for baseball softball fields, along with parking and other facilities. And, um, those are ideal for hosting tournaments and things like that. And then the cost, uh, this is very ballpark, but these can cost upwards of thirty million dollars. So it's, um, you know, that's, uh, i- if, if the city was to even go down that path, there'd need to be a market assessment, um, financial and economic studies and then, uh, pro-form a financial plan that would demonstrate this is gonna perform well over time. Uh, so the, the second alternative was what's called Nature Connection. Sorry, I had that on the nick. This is the sports concept there. The second, this, the second most popular concept was Nature Connection. This would, um, be lower impact. It would likely involve some kind of a perimeter path. And then there's, you know, a few other features that could be added, uh, if, uh, if this was selected. So I'll pause there and see if there's any questions you may have.
While I wait for everybody to queue up, I, I do have a couple. Can we modify the current contract with this, uh, vendor to instead of, uh, assessing sports fields out there just to find twenty-five acres, maybe inside our urban growth boundary that would be be, better equipped? And then to also then to do that, uh, financial plan associated with said land? And would that plan then tell us, um, like park bonds would work? And then we just ask council, is that something that council wants to go forward? Is, is that what you're asking or is that something we can do?
Yeah, that's a good question. I did ask our consultant that. I said, is there a way we can kind of go down the path of maybe looking at other sites around Battleground? Maybe if we could find three or four options. They said, uh, it's not within their existing scope of work. They didn't feel like there was anything they really felt like they could drop. But it, so it would likely involve a change order, but that's something either we as a city could do later with the same consultant or a different consultant. But yeah, their initial recommendation was we understand and hear the citizens, uh, sports complex is the most favorite option, but this might not be the best location for a facility such as that.
My, my issue with the, um, uh, uh, nature park is that, again, we still also have, there's no way to get there. Um, and it's out in the county, so this seems like, more like, for me, I was interested in, in the sports complex because that would be a revenue gen, repeat would be coming through town to get out there. Um, it would have some benefit, um, city citizens, I'm guessing, would get a discount or a break on running fields. That would be fairly easy to monitor. But just putting a nature park out there, basically we're, the city would be funding a county park. So if, if that's our option, I'd rather just deed it back to the county or the state at that point. And I see Deputy Mayor Bowman has his hand raised.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yep.
It's only on votes, so. My issue is, is similar to yours. Um, the, the first thing though is the, the sports fields that they said could fit in there, they said two soccer pitches, but they're not taking into account, um, doing a hood view model and using the cloverleaf baseball diamonds, if they're turf, and opening those up to create two soccer fields also. So you could have four soccer fields with four baseball fields and two soccer fields outside of the, uh, baseball diamond. So that, that can be overcome, you know, though they say you need four. But I'm, I'm, I'm kind of the same way, like this, this is in the county. But thi, this came about, um, years ago and there was, there was a choice between this and possibly working with the county down at Daybreak Park. They, the county owns two hundred acres down there along the river. And at the time, the big concern was, when I was with Little League, was if we go out there and we put a place in at Daybreak Park, which was flat, but it was on the river, those people that come to participate at that facility don't have to go through the city on the way home. They can just go out to High Five and go north and go south, whatever. They don't have to come back through the city. And this piece of property forced you, most, most people to come back through the city. So they would eat, shop, do those kind of things on the way home. Um, so that's why this site was, was picked over those. The, the, the nature park makes no sense whatsoever to me, why we would ever want to do that. We, we should just get out of it and give it back to the county at that, that point in time and just be done with it. Because it's, it's the same thing that we have right now. You can't, like you said, you can't get to it. We'd have to improve it. So if we're gonna improve it, let's improve it, put ball fields in or just not do it if we're gonna look for ball fields elsewhere. The, the only difference is it's gonna be, you know, probably ten to fifteen million dollars more. I, I know when I talked to, to, this has been a few years ago, when I talked to Hood View, when they built theirs, which has been fifteen years, twenty years ago, probably now, it was three million dollars per field, um, to build when they had to buy the property. It was one million dollar a field to build without the property. So, um, that's what we'd be looking at, probably just at today's dollars. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Cortez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so, you know, I, I remember when I was on the Vancouver Clark Parks and Rec Commission and we were doing a lot of the studying for the Luke, what's now known as the Luke Jensen Sports Field. This is when it was just brass, right? And so there were a lot of objections, some of them very similar to, uh, you know, s- some here, um, that we've seen on this Turkey Property, but all of them were overcome. And the Luke Jensen, by the way, Luke Jensen was a young boy from the Battleground area that died prematurely. Uh, we named the, that facility after him. Uh, but Luke Jensen is one of the most popular, uh, multi-use sports fields, uh, in the county, right? And so I really feel this, we owe it to our citizens to, number one, honor the fact that this is what they wanted. They, what rose to the top when we, when we did the outreach was they wanted a, a sports field. Uh, we have the property. Uh, I agree with a lot of the things that both you and Deputy Mayor Bowman have already stated, so I won't go into that. But I, I do think it's a good opportunity to rally the community together and, and go out for a, a, a bond that is going to be broad. It's gonna, it's gonna, you know, pull in your little leagues, it's gonna pull in your soccer clubs. And, and I think we can get broad-based support, uh, on a, on a bond, even if a bond is, you know, thirty, forty million dollars. I think we can get a broad-based level of support for that.
You? Councilmember Davis?
Thank you. I just want to, I'm basically piggybacking, but I, I do want to emphasize that when I saw the acreage, I was excited that we could finally get a sports complex here. I, my three are older now, but I've spent many a year. And we spent a lot of money in the towns that we played in. And I just think that this is a great possibility for our town. And, um, I, I agree. I think it's, it, we need to invest in at least looking into this a little bit deeper. So thank you.
So, um, any other questions? So what I'm here, so if we were, I'm hearing enough support on council to maybe look at either a change order or in-house. Either a change order or in-house or another contract with another vendor to potentially maybe. Or, or where do we go down the road for either identifying a different parcel? Or, and park bonds, was a finance, financial plan, would the sports complex be able to? Pay back those park bonds in some way or another, obviously not completely, but.
Well, I think the first question is. Are you comfortable proceeding with the, the preferred alternative in this work? To, to have a kind of a sports complex designed, to at least put in, put in that work, have that in place. And then we can still proceed with looking at other sites.
Will we be wasting time and money though if we're designing?
Well, that's the question is. I think our consultants are at a point of, do, you know, we can, they can put together a sports complex design. That's part of their scope, or they can switch gears and go to more the nature connection option, and I'm not hearing.
Yeah, I think.
I'm hearing more sports.
Yeah, I think the consensus is for the sports fields, and I, I mean, just, I, I don't see any other alternative properties in our.
Right, with the caveat that this may, in, in the end, it may not end up here, but I think. They need some direction on at least what, what they should design in this.
With the assumption that we're going to be going out for a parks bond. I, I would, I think would be the second part of that. Work that we could probably get them to do to perform.
Yeah, the second part would be.
The whole financial.
The, the next step would be to do a feasibility analysis, it's more, you know. An economic analysis and then. How to, then how to program this thing, it could be either all public, it could be all city, it could be partnerships. It could be private run. Those would all be down the road, but at this point, pretty high level, what, what kind of park would you? Most likely see at this location, if the city proceeds on the turkey property, that's. There's no commitments being made at this time, master planning is really just saying, this is. If we're going to do anything here, this is the concept that's preferred, and then. There'd be other decision-making pa, packages you'd need to look into.
Yeah, I just had a question, does the city look at nice flat land that? Just vacant and go out and ask people if they want to sell their land to us?
Had a piece large enough, we would, I mean, I, I was kind of looking. There's some, I mean, there's some land just sitting there in trust, I wonder if anybody would be interested in selling.
There was somebody that approached the school district a couple of years ago out on five oh two east. I believe you're aware of that parcel.
So I would like to suggest that, yeah, they finish their scope, right, I think that would. Be something I would agree on that they should finish their scope, and then also, I wouldn't be wanting to necessarily jump on a bond, but. Maybe looking at some partnerships, I know that there's a lot of groups out there. That I think they would jump on that and see, I don't know if any more grants are even out there for something like this. I mean, it doesn't have to be done tonight, so we can definitely, we have some time to do some research on that, I, I agree. With Mayor McCoy and Councilmember Bowman. That the nature park doesn't make any sense out there, I like the fact that you have to drive a little bit outside of town. And we would be, and for that kind of, for the sports, when a lot of places I've seen and visited for sports events. You always, you get in your car, the whole family goes, or the whole crew, the team, they meet up there, so it's, it's expected to be. Driving a vehicle out there versus a nature park, I don't, I don't. I think when you're talking about nature park, it's something that you'd want to be able to walk to, or. Yeah, not necessarily, but yeah. Thank you.
Member, we're holster.
Okay, so the turkey property. Is there a possibility that the battleground public schools may be interested in that kind of a property? Being its location, could we maybe work out something where we, some kind of trade or barter for other property that they may own? In some key areas that may be effective, I'm throwing that out there.
We'd have to look at the reason, it is deeded property to us with covenants and restrictions, so I believe it has to be used as a park, it has to keep the turkey name. I would have to look at that covenant and see if we could convey that to a, to a third party.
Okay, but as far as the sports complex, I think the citizens have spoke. On that and overwhelmingly decided that that's what they would like to see in there. As long as it still fell within the covenants of the property. I would be remiss to say, oh, we turn it into a nature park and spend all that money on a county park as Mayor. McCoy said. But I am very interested, this is something that I was passionate about. Before I became on council is getting some good ball fields for kids to play at here locally. I mean, we have the ball fields at convent, the community center. I know Battleground Little League utilizes those, and just like to see a home where all the kids can play sports. Preferably all in one area if possible. There's many leagues here, soccer, football, baseball that could utilize this space and be really cool, so.
I do know that the school district was interested in potentially partnering with any sports complex, as most of their fields flood out right now. So that's irregardless, that's regardless of location. I guess my question would be, do we have enough time? And capacity to have staff identify potential other property and. Switch focus for the vendor to look at it, to master plan this on another property. Or are we turkey or no, we're not getting a sports complex plan unless we do it on turkey kind of decision?
I think it's more the latter, I think they've kind of put the work onto this site already, and I think would kind of like to just finish out that. That concept. I think anything beyond that would potentially be a change order, or we look at, and I will look into this, is there anything maybe we can cut out? In the remaining work that could at least get us down the path of looking at some other sites.
Any other comments? Do you have the direction you need?
Yes, thank you.
Interim Chief McCabe couldn't make the meeting this evening, so we will push his administrative report to March fourth, so that concludes administrative reports for the evening.
Council Communications, I just have one thing, I'm looking for council consensus or, or not on. Having the city start to pursue parking ordinances on Northeast First Avenue and Southeast Commerce. If you, Northeast First Avenue, if you're not aware, is right to the north of where the food pods, food carts are going to be. If you've driven by there at any point during the school day, you will see it's completely full. I have reached out to the school district, I know they're building a warehouse and their parking will have some more spots come September. Regardless, I don't think it's our job to provide city streets for school parking. So my preference is to put some sort of two-hour limitation. With an exemption for residents or business owners to get some sort of permit that they could put on there. And the same kind of. Logic applies to Commerce Avenue where we have semi-truck trailers parking. And taking up spots, we know that's an issue out there with parking, so I'm looking for council input if, if you agree or disagree. And if you agree, then we would give city direction to develop a plan.
I would support city direction on moving forward on those.
I support it because we have a parking enforcement officer that can handle it now.
We good?
So that's for First Avenue, looking at two-hour time limits with the exemptions for potential business owners or residents.
Yes, and obviously I'd be open to whatever. Staff thinks would be appropriate, I would see to your expertise on that, so that's just my original idea, so.
Be similar to what they do by the Burgerville and the city.
Right here, yeah, it was the same, the same thing used to happen there, yeah.
I was doing. Would you, did you have any specific ideas as far as how many blocks would you like first as a whole? Is that something you want us to kind of look at?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, I'm.
Maybe if you can give us like two or three options.
And, and just based on, you know, drive it. Maybe have Sally go down there a couple of times and.
Well, we'll have to kind of formulate a unique, a different plan that we don't currently have, because we are going to make an exception for. The local population for the residents or the business owners, we would have to do probably some sort of permit parking program, so that would be new, we've.
Oh yeah, we could do nine to five, two hours or something. Yeah, I, I, that would be fine too, I'm, like, again, yeah.
Yeah, it's going to exclude, I mean, it's going to be first come, first served, so if you want to provide some permits for the local business owners or. Residents, I think a permit parking program would be the best way to go, but we'd have to build that out, we have, we don't currently have that yet.
Yeah, I did reach out to a couple of the businesses and they, they, a couple of their employees do park there, but they do have parking, they weren't really. Worried about that, but I still think it would be a good outreach maybe.
At, at some point, as.
As we get like. Yeah.
Goes, we will probably have to have that bigger discussion of pay parking.
Yes, yeah, and this has been a, this topic recently was requested by a business here on South First as well, so.
So do we have anything on Main Street? Any limits, shouldn't we? Add a limit there, if we're doing it the next street up?
You sure could.
Or do you want to wait until you do your downtown plan and then make a parking plan at that time?
I think that would be a.
Well, on, on this one though, on this particular, not main, I would like to see it in place by the school year. Yeah, September, sorry. Northeast First and Commerce, yeah, so I mean, do those together and by, by the beginning of school year.
And then what are you looking for a direction on Commerce? I guess, are you trying to address the truck parking, any parking with time limits, what's the goal there?
I, I think there's some, I mean, we've had issues everywhere from campers to trucks to. Abandon, yeah, you name it, so. I don't have anything that I'm for or against on there, other than I would like to see the problem solved. If it's two hours and that's great, if it's nine to five, you know, whatever. I mean, I'm guessing there's somebody on city staff that has more experience with this than, than I do or council does.
Well, we've changed that one like four times now, so. We still have all the signs, I'm, I'm assuming.
Maybe we go back to how it was, because it's not, in my opinion, it's not working now. So, yeah. Yep. Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, as far as commerce goes, there's, I think. The industrial and commercial areas have plenty of parking spaces over there, it's more of the people that maybe shouldn't be there. And so I, I would move to that we have some kind of two-hour limit on that with towability. Or something like that, some kind of, a little bit stricter enforcement on that. Maybe even with the local, even local businesses having the ability to have a permit if they needed one, so they get a little bit of a pass on that versus. People that might not belong there, so to speak, there are some dark areas of commerce that people might think, hey, this is a good place to do some nefarious things, so. Yeah, I'd like to eliminate that ability.
You're kind of looking at maybe a, a two-hour minimum all throughout, they're not really looking at, because in the past, the conversation on commerce has been around the fourteen thousand. Or heavier trucks and whether they could park overnight, so I'm. Kind of getting the sense that maybe that goes away and we just set a two-hour time limit for the street as a whole.
Well, and, and maybe we can do some outreach, local business over there and see, see what would be best for them and what would work best. Well, you know, I think only take a couple of tickets to change behavior, especially my, my, most of my concern to be, to be clear is on first, I'm. With those food cart pods coming in, they're already starting to open up, there's no parking at all over there. We have a businesses invested in this city and I, I would like to see the city help ensure that investment's successful.
We will bring back some ideas.
If we have to pause on commerce to get first done, then I'm all for that. Okay, anything else for the good of the order? Okay, council's going to pursuant to RCW forty-two dash thirty dash one one zero one G. This is eighty, council, City Battleground will now enter an executive session to review the performance and employee, the executive session will last for ten minutes. Beginning at eight thirty-five and ending at eight forty-five with no action to follow. After the execution session is over, we will resume the meeting and then close, so this is the, pretty much the end of the public portion of the meeting, thank you all. That concludes the seven o'clock showing of City Battleground. That concludes the seven o'clock showing of city battleground.